We will call the May 10 meeting of the Peters Township Council to order. Mr. Law, your roll call.
Mrs. Merrill.
I see.
Mr. Thigle.
President.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Burquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
First, please, ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go. For over a minute from the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, special reports, there are none. Audience comments?
Special comments.
Say your name and address, please.
Adrian Markosik, 106 Janus Drive. So I moved here from Allegheny County a few years ago, and one of the things that attracted me about Peters was the low taxes. And now I'm seeing a whole bunch of news stories about Peters being $30 million or $40 million in debt, whatever the number may be, it seems overly large, and just trying to understand what type of fiscal mismanagement has occurred to put township in this type of situation, what the impact on taxes is going to be.
Thank you.
Should we respond?
Is there anyone else? Or? Lewis, did you comment?
Absolutely, because I, just like you, have been very frustrated with what I read out there. And I'd like to address a number of the false statements and reported attacks that have been made on this council in the follow-up to next week's primary election. I take a personal affront to the dedicated service of this prior councils and the staff that has provided exceptional oversight and served you as valued trustees in this community. First of all, I've been serving on council for a long time, and I know, I imagine a number of you think it's been too long. I started in 1982 after serving for four years on the zoning hearing board. I was 37 when I started. I was recruited by a hiring council member saying, "We only meet twice a month, it's not bad." That turned out to be a friendly lie. We had over 40 meetings that year. Took much more time than I'd planned. I stayed with it while my kids were little, but I stepped down in 1989 to spend more time with my family. As the kids got older and had less interest in dad, I returned and devoted time again to council. I returned in 2001. I tell you that for some reasons. Takes a lot more time than you realize. Most of the new candidates are at the age that I understood my kids were needing me more. Before considering council, I committed four years of an apprenticeship at the zoning hearing board, learning how Peters Township worked. None of these candidates have served on any township boards, or to the best of my knowledge, even walked into this council chamber. Since one of the candidates has lived here for only two years, let me go over some of the major issues we've dealt with that have impacted and made determining futures in the township a significant concern. When I started, the Pennsylvania Turnpike was determined to traverse Peters Township with this new southern beltway coming right through the middle of our town. We battled the turnpike and established the roadway would not go through a populated portion of Peters. Next, Pendott wanted to reconstruct Route 19 with a Jersey barrier dividing the highway down the center. We battled to get the alternate center-turning lane established. Can you imagine what our business unit going down Route 19 would look like if we had that Jersey barrier? The Montour Railroad stopped running. Yeah, they actually have cold train engines to come through this town not all that long We set out to purchase that abandoned right-of-way. We spent $10,000. Actually, our first goal was to secure and preserve the right-of-way in the hope that the Port Authority would extend the light rail transit into Peters. When Bethel Park failed to do the same, we came up with a concept for the trail. Unbelievable as it was, we encountered major objection from the residents. But we pushed forward, built the trail, and now I consider it to be a township treasure. The next point I want to make is we were dealing with numerous requests for recreational improvements in our township park. We had no master, we had no real plans for what we wanted to see Peterswood Park become. We hired a master planner. We paid to have a design done. We borrowed money to do Phase 1 of the Pan improvements. And before we got finished with Phase 1, the residents were coming in here saying, "Let's finish it." Why are we finishing? They loved what we had done. That's just some of the events this council has done to make Peters a better place to be. I'm going to address, unbeknownst to Peters Township staff or this council, Rolling Hills Country Club reached an agreement to sell to a private developer. I was at the time a retired equity member of Rolling Hills Club, but I only heard about this membership meeting from an active member the night of the hearing. A vote was taken that night, and an agreement reached to sell the property with the active members receiving the right to join South Point with a reduced section of fees. When purchaser, the developer, came to the township, their conceptual plans for the development were not in compliance with our zoning ordinances. The township and the school district met, we discussed purchasing the property. Then the developer wanted considerably more money than they had paid that prior year, and we decided to go forward with eminent domain. The township purchased 90 acres of that property with borrowed funds. Okay, that's enough of the history, I guess. I want to talk about some of the things that we've seen. Posted billboards and attacks in social media. This team of five candidates has never stepped in your council chambers, none of them have ever applied before or been interviewed for a township board position. They posted internet billboard postings declaring this council has overspent their recent budgets by $30,843,000, when in fact, over the last 10 years, our all balance, all fund balances have increased by $6,482,000. This means the township's managed its funds well, we've actually accrued more money, not This team has posted that the bond debt for this township is now over $40 million. That's an absolute misrepresentation. The actual debt, published every year, most recently at $24,500,000. It's currently being used to buy the Rolling Hills Park property, purchase and equip two new fire trucks, purchase property for a new firehouse. It does include design fees for the construction of park property improvements. But bond funding is exactly like you taking a mortgage to purchase your house, and it distributes the payments equitably across the terms of the bond. Today's bond rates have been unbelievably low. The township has maintained a self-imposed limit on its borrowing capacity at 10% of its available funds. As of today, we are only at 5%, half of that self-established figure. The average debt service for home mortgages is probably between 15 and 20%. And in certain circumstances, I believe it can go up to actually 25%. We're at 5%. This township is in excellent financial situations. I know I've read, and the team was alleged that there were two groups that were willing to build an aquatic center at Rolling Hills at no cost to the township. And therefore, why wasn't that investigated more? Well, a couple of good reasons. One, one of the groups dropped out because they went bankrupt. The other group, he wanted a major land parcel devoted to his development of a commercial restaurant sales or spa-type facility in addition to the aquatic facility. And we determined that that concept of using public lands for that type of private development was inappropriate, and we didn't consider going any further. But in either of those two cases, we're going to see the facility built at no cost to the township. The firm that went bankrupt wanted a significant contribution from the township toward their development, and the other party wanted, in essence, an extended land lease for that part of the park that we would turn over to his private, in essence, country club with an aquatic facility, really what it was characterized as. The group questions why 1.2 million has been spent on the aquatic facility. Well, about $400,000 was spent on design. The balance has been degraded an area to a usable flat surface that anticipating the aquatic center could go there or that property could be used for any improvement. Group says, "Why are you in a hurry to go proceed with the aquatic center?" What's the big hurry? Well, I can only tell you that I'm sure they're unaware, the original pool group that was responsible for the township conducting an early survey for a pool and other recreational facilities, came out with not a pool, but the township decided to build a rec center. This group has waited, in essence, three generations for the township to consider building the pool. That's the reason I am, and I believe this council is actively pursuing, building the aquatic center. I think this group also fails to realize that the township staff, this council endured a complete change in the township staff in recent years. We've changed through retirement, township manager. We replaced the township manager with the assistant manager. We had a new police chief, a new fire chief, a new public works director, and a head librarian. And this council worked extremely hard through staff to come up with valid candidates for each of those positions. We've actually, I think, far exceeded any of our expectations with regard to the quality of people we filled those with judgment. Police department is now fully accredited and top-ranked in the Commonwealth. Fire department has increased its accreditation and is planning to expand its ability to respond to the eastern part of the township with a new firehouse in addition to fire False accusations and misrepresentations have personally offended me, and I'm sure must have our staff and other council members. Personally, I would expect a public apology to be made to the entire staff in this council by this team of candidates. The township annually receives an award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the quality of its financial reporting and the township's finances. This township has a standard for its bond rating, which is AA+. A status earned by only a few municipalities in this Commonwealth. We've heard nothing but trash talk from this campaign. When I've asked others, and I and others have asked for some simple questions to be answered, they refuse to answer them. What's your interest in running? What experience or qualifications makes you the better candidate? You claim to be running as a team. Do you realize the only way council can meet is as a whole? If elected, there's no more team meetings. What is this team's agenda? You accuse this council of beholding to a special interest, which is another insult, an outright untruth. It's your team with a person behind the scenes, Shannon Berry. Who I understand is Diane Irey's bond's campaign worker. He establishes a team's website presence and is serving as the advisor, campaign manager, and who knows what else. Come clean with whatever that relationship is. Before you go to vote, I suggest you go back and look at your township tax bill. You received it in March. Divide that number by 12 and see what you're actually paying for your Peters Township services. For me, it's about $30 a month for fire, police, roads, parks, libraries, snow removal, all the other services that are provided to 24/7. That $300 a month covers the township's bond payments for the purchase and preservation of the over 270 acres of prime Peters Township real estate this council has purchased for public use and enjoyment. To me, the $30 a month, when compared to my monthly phone bill, my cable bill, my internet service bill, any one of them is the best bargain out there. You need to understand, in the past 10 years, our tax rate has remained steady. It was only revised one time by 1/10 of 1 mil. I'm only able to vote for two candidates where I live. One is Victoria Irey-Hassan. She's one that you can all vote for. She's at-large. To me, you are the one candidate with the most risk with your team's campaign strategy. If you were to be elected and seated in council chambers next year and discover that everything you said to get elected was incorrect, and finally realize that this township is in excellent shape, what do you tell the people who voted for you? Understanding how your campaign was run by attempting to trash this good name of this council, the staff, and the name of Peters Township, how do you explain that to those people that you voted for you? I'm not sure the enlightened residents of this township would continue to support your mother and her continually growing the county. I know I will not. Tom Poraska, I served on council with your dad. When I asked, "How with all your responsibilities as a doctor, a family with four children, all active in sports, how do you think you can find time to be on council?" Quite frankly, I'll spare you by repeating your response. I was shocked. Yes, I'm bitter over the false and unfounded attacks that made this council and staff, made against this council and staff and the good name of this township. For a team that professes to love Peters Township, your false accusations and trash talk have certainly, certainly to me, not been an expression of love or civility, but an attempt to run down our township for political gain. All of my statements are my own. Other members of council may choose to comment on my assessments and opinions, that's their call. All I can do is ask you to seek the truth. Every fact I've stated is available to the public in the township building. I'd suggest, if you want to come in and look, that you call, and you might consider thanking the staff for their service. Please vote yes on the two ballot questions limiting the governor's emergency powers. I suggest you consider re-electing this council to reserve the integrity of this great township. You might also wonder, as I am, why each of the team's candidates ended up being number one on the ballot. Each ballot placement is supposed to be a random lottery. All right, guys, I don't know if I've gone outside some of your thoughts and opinions, but you're welcome to comment.
All I can say is, you bought a house in Peters Township?
I did, yes.
You paid cash for it?
I wish.
You borrowed money, right?
I did, yes.
That's the same thing that we have to do. Do you know what your debt service to your available funds is?
I do.
What is it?
It's not going very well.
Okay. Well, my point is, ours is 5%. We have to borrow money. We have to buy, you know, a fire truck is $1 million. We don't have that sitting underneath this countertop here.
Nor is it fair if we did, as to what had been the source of that $1 million that we had under the counter, because it was all the people in history that had helped build that. Fire truck's going to serve the next 20 years worth of people, and those bond payments are a way of equitatively distributing that cost across that period of time.
So the point is, it's not the amount of debt, it's how you can service it.
So what you're saying is not everything on the internet is true?
Yeah. Yeah, pretty much, yeah. And I'll also say, Upper St. Clair, right next door, has a debt right now, I think, around $45 million, and they're going to borrow another $14 million. So I think they're very well financially also, especially right now with interest rates where they are. It's prudent to look at borrowing funds. So that's my take. Anybody? Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. I think we, as a council, as myself, I find it, I just find it distressing that people make statements that besmirch the efforts of this council and this staff, for whatever reasons, that they're just, they're statements that are not true, provably not true. You can look at our financial reports, you can look at the audit reports, and put your finger on the numbers, and they are not true.
Okay. Any other audience comments?
No.
All right. Moving on. Unfinished business? We have none. New business? Acquisition of right-of-way needed to extend Manor Way.
Before I begin, Mr. Bertehan is in the audience. Mr. Bertehan is the attorney representing the township in this matter.
My name is Sir.
So, before council tonight is an ordinance and a declaration of taking which authorizes the acquisition of .033 acres of land, as well as a temporary construction easement of .012 acres for the purpose of extending Manor Way. The extension will greatly enhance access for public safety and public work vehicles to the homes in the Beacon Manor and Morella Manor plan of lots. And as evident of this included in your doc are a series of letters that were written in August of 2017 from Captain Maloney, Chief Coyle, and Mr. Hurson. As council is aware, it's the opinion of the township solicitor that the township has ownership of a right-of-way where the existing cartway is, the actual paved area, and that prescribed right-of-way is 33 feet. It does not go to the end of the property, it comes slightly short from that. And it's for that reason that the township needs to acquire this additional piece of property if we're to extend Manor Way into the new Juniper Woods plan. Mr. Bertehan is probably in a better position than I to explain the process by which we will be acquiring that, and Mr. Smith can answer any questions you have concerning ownership of the cartway.
Mr. Law, I wanted to, since we seem to have a theme this evening of correcting misperceptions in the community, over the last month or so, I've gotten a couple of calls from township residents asking me why we are going to use eminent domain to assist a private developer in obtaining this right-of-way. And I think we need to clear the record on that. This was not requested by the developer. In fact, I think quite honestly, if the developer had his choice, probably he wouldn't want this connection. As I understand it, Ned, you can correct me on this if I'm wrong, I think a majority of the lots in Juniper Woods have been sold already, a good portion of the homes have been built already. There's no marketing benefit to the developer to have this connection go through. The reason this connection is going to go through, or at least we hope it's going to go through, is because our EMS, our police department, and our fire department have all concluded that response times will be reduced by this connection going through, because as of right now, the residents in that neighborhood over there, Locust, Beacon, and those areas are not accessible from Peters Township. So the reason we are doing this is not to benefit the developer, we are doing this because it's a public safety issue.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Are you allowed to speak?
It's Mr. Ball who's speaking.
Since I'm the owner of the property? Yeah. I'm sorry, sir. Sure. When you want to speak, which is fine, come up to the podium and say your name.
I just want to say my thing, I'll leave.
No, that's okay.
I'll have council with me today. I was told to be quickened.
Sure, that's fine. Just state your name and address.
Jason Snyder, 3112 Manor Way. I'd also moved to Peters 21 years ago, and Mr. Lewis's ambition is what I have. The problem that I see is I have signatures of every resident on my road, going up the road to Locust, the ones who don't work for the township all signed it, stating they don't want the road. So they're not really concerned too much about the safety, I guess, as you're saying. But I don't understand, and I'm going to contradict what you just said, why am I being punished as a resident of Peters Township to enhance development of that private developer? Intimate domain is supposed to be taken to benefit the people of the township. A school, a park, that's fine. But why am I being punished? When we bought this house 21 years ago, it was private, dead-end road, that's where I wanted to be. And nobody in my township, in my streets, wants this road. So you're driving it down our throats on those two roads. And I'll get signatures from every one of them, I already have them, from back when we first started this fiasco. Now, ever since it started, they've slowly been on our road, on my road, on my road. They tore up my yard. I got a bill coming for that, okay? It's ridiculous. They got half of my property tore up already, the .33 acres, or whatever you want to call it. It's already tore up, okay? I have as much passion as Mr. Lewis does, and I'm not going to bend over and take it where the sun don't shine. I'm taking this to court, and we're going to fight it as far as we have to fight it. Because I'm not getting screwed and losing money because a developer wants to cut his road through there to make it safety. There was another owner in Peters who offered to sell property to you to get the right-of-way through there. You just turned it down. So you had other options of doing things to do that, okay? And I'm just as passionate as Mr. Lewis was in that speech. And before I get even more passionate, that's really all I have to say. So, you know, let the chips fall where they may.
Understood.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
I have a question, Paul. Was there somebody that was willing to sell us some property for ingress and egress?
Not at this location to provide access to...
300 yards, 300 yards up the hill.
Within that area?
Not to provide access to...
To St. Clair. Correct. There's a cul-de-sac where people offer to sell you property.
I am not aware of this, and that, and even if it was, this is the only location that connects you back into the Beacon Manor plan and the Morella Manor plan. This is the only location that that's possible from.
But with all the signatures that I have, does that matter? That nobody wants that?
I can see that's to be addressed.
Nobody wants that. Nobody in that whole strip, there's one person that lives on our road that has to stay out of it because he works for the township. So I can't get his signature. So I can't get his signature because he can't sign. But everybody else has signed. They do not want it.
We're not sure the roads are up for a two-way traffic.
If you're going to speak, you have to come up to the podium.
Sherry Snyder, 3112 Manor Way. And the roads coming down, I mean, we don't even know if they're, when there's a bus coming down, a bus and a car cannot both go up and down.
You can't drive through FedEx trucks. They're barely hitting, they're hitting mirrors. You're pushing this for some reason, I don't know what it is, but you have to, you know, heard him speak about the residents of Peters Township, he's been there for how many years? Well, what about the Peters Township group in our plan down there? We don't want it. And I'm fighting for them. And I paid taxes on that so-called road that, that obviously is not mine now for 21 years. So I should get reimbursed for not having that as my property. My survey goes past that into the right-of-way that's on my survey in that big valley. There's a right-of-way right there, it's on my survey. So now they're saying it's too old, you can't use it, this and that. So now they're going to take my road. That's wrong. I mean, the road's coming down, they already did it. They put all these sores in, they put all these drains in. They charged them people $5,000, what it was years ago. They didn't ask me or my neighbor. I wonder why? Maybe because it's my road, right? We're only doing that whole strip down there, didn't have to pay $5,000 to have my curbs put in and drains put in. Now all of a sudden, the big hollow disappeared because D E P all mentioned putting anything in there. Now they're saying, okay, now it's all worth paying it. Well, you're not going to pay it. I'll go to Supreme Court. I have as much passion as Mr. Lewis does. And I'm telling you, I have all my hope, everybody behind my road, on both sides of the road, will sign a petition, and we will go. And I'll get news involved, I'll get everything involved. I'm not, that's wrong. That is absolutely wrong. There's other township that don't have two accesses, okay? And we're going to hire, we're going to hire our own town people to come and do that. It ain't going to be much. It ain't going to be much at all. And I'm sorry, I told my wife I was not going to get upset and mad, but I'm passionate about that. That's a beautiful piece of property down there. And I've been there for, my son moved here when he was one years old. And I brought him here to Peters Township preschool to go to school. They put the 40 acres of woods around me, and nothing I can do about that. I can't do nothing about those houses either, right? There's a beautiful access coming off of Combsville. They don't need this road coming in on them. They don't need it. There's going to be a wall there that's going to be 30 feet high next to that creek. People are going to, kids are going to be falling off of that thing, playing around. Go visit it. Doesn't make any sense. And I know you guys already made your minds up, I understand that, okay? Because you know I'm litigation, that's why he's here, okay? It's a no-brainer. It's government taking, taken away from a resident of the township. It's just, I can see if you had no other access in there, but that's a beautiful, that plan is not that big. I've built houses when I was younger. That plan is not that big. It's a loop. There's something going on, and they're pushing that for a reason. It's not because of safety. I don't know what it is.
Honest to gosh, that is the reason. And I know you disagree with me, but I'm telling you, there is no other reason than that.
Well, everybody on that, on that whole hillside don't want it. I know we live in a barn, we don't live in country barn, okay? We live in boughs, okay? We're not multimillionaires. But my passion is a heck of a lot more than my property. And I'm going to fight it, and I'm sure, I'm glad he's here to hear me. Because you all know Ted Taylor, how he is, I come from the same mold. I grew up in Hill Station, okay? So that's the kind of mold that I have with Ted. So I'm just telling you a little piece of advice, so.
I appreciate your comments.
Okay? Thank you. I'm going to be very professional.
I'd just like to make an observation. I appreciate your feelings, I really do. I live in a newer plan. We have cul-de-sacs. You know, one of the things that's always a problem is when people build, and the road is supposed to be connected, the realtor never tells you that, unfortunately, and we run into different issues. And recently, we've been much more systematic about putting in the sign that said, this road may be extended. And I think part of the problem is, a lot of people don't realize that, then they see the sign, and then they understand. I don't believe that there was a sign in your property when you were first moving there. I know that there's been issues about the measurements. I can also validate that there are a lot of people in your plan that I've spoken with who feel the same way about the traffic, about the width of the roads, concern for safety, people have reported accidents. I'm very torn about this, because, again, like I said, I live in a plan, it's a closed plan. We like it because we don't like to cut through traffic, so I can see that part of it. You know, we have had, our public works people are firing our police, talking about the safety element, you know, and so that is a very positive reason to have an opening. So I just wanted to validate that, please understand, not everybody's mind is made up.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I think it's, you know, a person's home is, you know, their foundation, where they invest their money. You expected one thing to be the way it is, and it's, now it's changing, and it's very traumatic.
I like, thank you very much. I've been, since this started, I've been told 14 different things. And that's another reason why I have that little edge on my voice that I have, okay?
I'm sorry, if you're going to speak, you do have to come to the podium. You know, because it's on television.
You're being recorded.
Oh, I figured that. I'm sure you can hear me. But, but no, what I'm saying is, I've been told 14 things going in this process. And none of them turn out to be true, okay? I met with the developer. So he, obviously, he's not involved, why did I meet with him at the beginning? So then I met with...
Well, I think because, at one point, he was going to give you additional property adjacent to your property.
Yeah.
When this first started, there was another offer where he was going to give you part of the land to make your property...
But he wasn't giving me a part of the land.
Well, that was...
Because the lot has to be a certain size in Peters Township. So if you're taking that, he's not giving me that, he has to give me that, or I won't comply with the ordinance, correct?
No, your lot, even after just taking, will be conforming. The whole idea behind the...
Let me stop you. There's really no sense in even talking anymore.
Okay.
Because we're just going to go around in circles, okay? You guys know how I feel, you know?
Absolutely.
And I'm very strongly on that. And there's no sense in going back and forth and bickering. I'm just not going to, I told myself I'm not going to do that.
Okay.
We'll let the lawyers handle it, you know? No matter how far we have to go up the ladder, we'll do whatever we have to do to do that, okay? I just wanted to state myself and my wife's saying that we are opposing it, because we don't agree that a private contractor should be benefit from taking my land. If it was a park, or a school, or something to benefit the residents of Peters, there's nothing I can do about it, okay? Now, you're throwing in the safety thing, I understand that, but I wanted that on record, and I'm done.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
I would just like to say that I think before any of that, I was down there.
Oh, yes, you were.
Because, I forget, what's the guy on the street? Is it Andy? Andy called me, and I went down there, and I looked at that creek.
That hole.
Yeah, I was like kind of shocked, and I met with you in front of your house, and then I think your neighbor came out.
Joe. We're the two pieces of property, they didn't agree to the road.
We chatted and chit-chatted, and then I knew you from, your sons are about the same age as my son, and they played ball together for years, something like that, baseball.
Yeah.
And, you know...
And I know, I want you, I want on record too, he voted no for that.
Well, I did vote no, and, you know, you know, I just, I understand that there's a safety issue, but I also understand that if it's not necessary for the plan, you know, I mean, that's a tough call for me to even make.
But that's been, those houses, it'd be different, it'd be different if that was a new housing plan that we live in. It's not. It's been there since 1950. We never had a problem with fire trucks and ambulances getting there before, but now all of a sudden, it's, 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 there's a problem. I don't understand that.
Well, it's not that there's a problem, Sarah, it's just that, up until now, there's never been an opportunity to connect that neighborhood into the township.
Nobody's died because it took 15 minutes to get there instead of...
Well, you had a guy die in a fire there a couple of years ago.
That was up on top of the hill, ain't me.
Well, it's still, maybe...
No, it's up on top, ain't me.
Still in the same neighborhood.
Well, it was in a fire.
It was on Locust, you know...
Okay, anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
If this were to be acquired, refresh my recollection, is it going to be used as a public right-of-way, or would it only be used to access for emergency situations?
It's an extension of a public road.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask Mr. Brezner to come up and explain the process to us, since it's obvious we're going to be litigating this?
Good evening, everyone. The process is basically simple. If you decide to proceed, you would pass the ordinance tonight or at some point.
And then we would be authorized to file a declaration of taking. The declaration of taking, under English law, is easier to understand its meaning. They call it an enforced deed. Otherwise, we would be acquiring a portion of this property for the extension of a public Once that occurs, title passes. The right to possession does not pass. You would not have the right to go in and construct until any litigation that was filed was terminated. That litigation is called preliminary objections. The property owner would say, "I object to what you have done, and here's the reasons why." Now, there are very specific things in the law that they would have to object to. In this case, I'm very familiar with counsel for these people. He files declarations, he files preliminary objections with great regularity and is very competent. And one of the things he would say is, "This isn't for a public reason." They've made that very obvious, and so did the couple tonight. They would say, "This is for the developer, not for the public." And we would be forced to prove that it's not, that it is for a public purpose, and that public purpose would be the safety issue that we've talked about. Now, when a preliminary objection is filed, that requires the Court of Common Pleas to have a hearing concerning the worthiness of that preliminary objection. The sole issue is not valuation, how much should be paid, anything along that line. The sole issue is, can this taking continue? Any appeal from that judge's decision would be to the Commonwealth Court, which means another delay, minimum a year. And then, an appeal from that to the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania is not by right of appeal, but by right of request. The court may take it, may not take it. So what I want you to understand is, if they file preliminary objections with the passion that they've shown to you, you will have a delay in this project. It's not going to take place this summer. Will you prevail? I believe that you will. If that's what you want to do, I believe that you will prevail. But, the judge will decide that, not your lawyer, okay? So the process is going to be elongated if the filing of preliminary objections takes place, and I have no reason to doubt that it's going to take place. Any questions?
Who's representing them, Bill? Are you allowed to tell me?
I prefer not to.
Okay, send me an email.
How prolonged is the plan? How close are we to complete?
They're in a better position to speak.
They're ready, very close to being able to pave Manor Way. They haven't even started paving any portion of Manor Way. But the lots are selling fast, and it'll be built out sometime next summer.
Can you suggest whether or not, if Manor Way was not extended, what benefit would that be to the developer?
If it's not extended?
If it's not extended, is there enough of a lot area for him to sell another lot, make a little bit more, maybe a lot more money?
Well, I would suggest that the one thing you would never want to do is, is to abandon completely the right-of-way that's in that plan, because at some point in time, someone may well want to extend this. And if you allow him to sell that lot off, you will preclude that from ever occurring. And that's not in the interest of the township, and it's not in conformance with the policy the township has set for interconnected plans. So I don't think it would make sense to preclude that going forward. But I think there's no advantage, quite frankly, and this is what I think Ed was speaking to, and somebody else in council was speaking to. The fact of the matter is, this plan is selling quickly, and in all likelihood, before that road is done, all of these lots will be sold. There's a real market for the housing that they're doing there.
To refresh you a little bit on that. Memories. Manor Way has been in our plans, right? The extension of that road was always...
Well, even when you look at the recorded plan for back in the 60s, and even though this right-of-way, where they built the cartway, wasn't where they drew it on the plan, the right-of-way extends to the property line, and the only reason it would extend to the property line is to indicate that, in fact, at some point, it would be extended onto that farm.
So theoretically, we could, or should have put one of our little signs that says, "This road could be extended."
Well, but, you know, the other thing about it is, you know, these were all private roads at one point in time, and these weren't always public roads, and the township went in and took those over. And so hindsight's 20-20, but that's probably correct.
So, Mr. Snyder?
We were not doing that at that time.
Right. In 1972, we should have done it.
My point is, it would be a location for such a sign.
Yes.
But if the right-of-way went all the way to the property line, whenever Mr. and Mrs. Snyder bought the property, that title search should have pulled that up and made them aware that that was a right-of-way that went to the edge. I mean, there shouldn't be a complete surprise to them that at some point, that road may have been, not that that makes their situation any...
This is always a difficult situation. We did not extend the road in...
Anthony Farms.
Anthony Farms. And I've always regretted that, because for all the right reasons. And this is difficult, I understand where they're coming from. They've lived there all these years, it's a quiet little cul-de-sac. But if it was planned to have a road there, and the public safety issue is, I think it's more important that these residents really realize.
I think you have, you know, you have to understand that you have fire trucks passing this, going the whole way up to Hayes Road and coming back. That's not, that's not a good thing. The same for ambulance and police, that is not a good thing to have to go up through Upper St. Clair to come back to service the community.
Well, and it's not only that, and what we haven't touched on is, you know, heaven forbid, there's a, you know, a domestic situation up there or something, the SWAT team has to be called in, and now you have the road blocked off, there's no other way into the neighborhood. And I know I brought this up the last time we were discussing this, two years ago, I had that in my old neighborhood on Spring Street, because there's only one way in, and the husband and wife had a domestic, and the SWAT team was called out, and the rest of the residents couldn't get out of the neighborhood, because the SWAT situation was at the beginning of the street, and then the cops were there and all that, and...
Only one egress.
Only one egress. So people were running over the hill, going down into Forest Lawn to go to safety, because there was no way out.
Just one other point. It doesn't benefit the developer in any way. He doesn't gain any lots from this Manor Way connection.
Quite honestly, the developer benefits when it's not done, because he saves the money of having to eat room. This is all for the township, not for the developer at all.
And now presuming that, well, not presuming, because obviously, the Sniders are going to fight this as far as they can, presuming that Manor Way, I mean, the Juniper Woods is completely built out, and they come in, and they want to dedicate the roads, we're still able to accept the dedication, subject to them completing that, right?
Well, and as of right now, they're going to pave up to the property line, because that's what they're required to do as part of their development.
Okay.
All right, with that in mind, I'll make a motion to council adopt ordinance number 866 and authorize Brezner and Finnegan and Brezner, P.C., to file a declaration of taking in the Court of Common Pleas of Washington County on behalf of the township.
Just a second. Just a second. One second. Okay. No discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Close?
Nay.
I think we need a roll call, because I don't know what that was.
It was 4-3.
A roll call then?
Mr. Lewis?
Nay.
Mrs. Merrill?
Nay.
Mr. Cozer?
Aye.
Mr. Steigel?
Nay.
Mr. Burquist?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Nay.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
So, it's 4-3 and 3-4. Yeah, it fails.
Okay. Well, this should be...
I'll give you a call tomorrow, Bill.
I'm just gonna wait on out of here.
Thank you so much.
But just so that we have a common understanding, we're gonna have the developer do what's provided for on the plan, which is to extend the roadway down towards the property line. It'll be short of the, of Manor Way, but it's gonna be extended down in that direction, because that's what the plan calls for.
And you may want to now do that sign if it's five or 10 years from now, or next year.
I think we ought to install the sign.
I think it absolutely...
We ought to install the sign, and this is gonna get revisited at some point in time.
When Mr. Snyder sounds.
I don't understand it, but it's... I don't understand it either, but... Okay. It's the authorization for creation of an account at CFS Bank.
This is simply authorization to open an account at CFS Bank. We have an individual who's entered the drop program with the lease. It requires a separate account.
Move. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ballers? Okay. Authorize the appropriate township official to sign a separation agreement between William Woods and Peters Township.
This is a voluntary separation agreement between the township and Officer Woods. It, it prescribes the terms of, of his, his separation. The only thing that is out of the ordinary is that we will provide him hospitalization coverage for his family until December 31st of 2021.
I move that we approve the signing of a voluntary separation agreement between Officer William Woods and Peters Township.
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
One for Luggedon. Aye.
Award for a bid of the 2021 Peters Township storm sewer plan.
So, the 2021 budget includes an appropriation of $260,000 for storm sewer improvements. This appropriation includes this project, under which corrugated metal piping is going to replace, as well as lining projects, which will come later. As you can see, we have solicited bids, and what's on the screen is a tabulation of those bids. The low bid is Morgan Excavating at $83,650. We have done work with Morgan before, and they have done so successfully. So, it's my recommendation that we award a contract.
So, move. Second. Any discussion?
Just a question for Mr. Zalitis. With all the things we're reading about the price of materials and the difficulty of materials getting them, can we consider this a firm bid, or is there some material that is potentially going to...
No, it's, it's a firm bid. There's name escalator, Corwin.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Favor?
Aye.
Close.
I had a question, though. Mark, why did, why is this $83,000, but we budgeted $260,000? Is there more that we were...
Well, yeah, in the fall, I think we're gonna do some pipe lining projects.
Yeah. I figured that had to be reason, because Mark doesn't leave that much on the table.
Do you want the developer to do what you think needs to be done for us here?
I, I think so, yeah. I mean, we have a couple. I mean, we always have candidate projects. You know, we have a list as long as my own. But, you know, the ones that need done immediately should take less effort than what we have left in the budget, so...
Okay. Award a contract to Jordan Tax Service for the collection of property tax.
So, Jordan Tax Service in a Peters Township business has served as our real estate tax collector since 2000. Their service has been exemplary, and their fees have been very reasonable. In fact, if you were to look at our cost of collection, they're actually lower now than they were when we, we had our own tax office way back then. Their contract runs out at the end of the year, and they are proposing a four-year extension to 2025. What they're looking for is an increase in, per tax bill of a nickel from a buck 75 to a buck 80, which, when you, when you calculate that out, comes out to about $460 a year. So, Peters Township School District has already discussed this matter at their April meeting, and they recommend that Peters Township Council approve a four-year contract with the Jordan Tax Service, and I recommend the same.
So, move.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. Award a contract for short-term disability insurance program.
One of the things that Peters Township has done for, for many years is to provide self-insurance for our short-term disability program. So, the way we, we cover non-work-related injuries is that people are afforded sick days, and you could accumulate, most people can accumulate six, sick days up to 60 days. And then, in addition to that, there is a short-term disability program that provides coverage for 2/3 of pay up to six months. And then, beyond that, you, we have an insurance policy that provides long-term disability coverage. The reason why we had chosen to, to self-insure for a short-term disability is that because of the number of sick days people have, very seldom does anybody ever end up on short-term disability. That has changed dramatically starting last year, and in your, in your docket, there's a chart that shows that in 2020, we expended $20,912 on short-term disability, and in 2021, we already have spent, expended $36,749. But in addition to that, we have another person, an elder, an older employee who's gonna go in and have knee surgery. I will guarantee you, he'll end up on, on short-term disability as well. So, that has caused Ryan and I to rethink whether or not it makes sense to continue to self-insure for this. And it isn't the payments we're making out for the short-term disability that creates the problem, because all of these people have wages that are budgeted for. So, when you go to 2/3 of pay, you're actually a saving. The problem is the expense that's associated with, with employees, like, for instance, when we, with the building inspector. We have to replace that with a third party to come in and, and to assist us. And when we're doing that, that is an unbudgeted expense. And so, you know, one, one side of me thinks that, in the long run, we will still be better off, not self-insuring, but the safe thing to do, and the cautious thing to do, is to, to begin to insure for that. And what we went out and got, and what we're proposing, is that we have a short-term disability policy that, that goes into effect after 30 days, and that it stays into effect up until the long-term insurance goes, goes into effect. And, and in that way, the township's exposure with regard to these, the continued payment for short-term disability is capped. And, so, we have a proposal from, from One America, which is, who is our long-term carrier, to provide that kind of coverage for about $25,000 a year. So, it's our recommendation that we actually, that we actually transfer that risk from the township onto the insurance company.
Does the employee pay anything towards this, the premiums?
No.
So, it's like an ad flack or something like that?
No, it's, 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 this...
Can't say that, because I'm on the dock, but you know.
Yes. This is a policy that is provided by the township.
Sold yourself short.
Oh, on the documenting these ADA full-time employees. So, does that cover all of our staff or our collective bargaining people?
It covers all of our staff.
All right. And then, what about the part-time people if they would have an incident? What happens with...
They do not have coverage for sick days or disability for non-work-related injuries.
Right. But it, so if it was work-related, it would be workers' comp.
Work-related, workers' comp. If, if something happens at home, whether it's an illness or an injury, they, they do not have coverage in that area.
And one last question about the number. Is the number fixed? Will the premium change if you would happen to ask somebody or perhaps lose a staff member? How, is it, is it adjusted over time?
It's adjusted, because it's, it's based, it's calculated based upon the amount of compensation paid employees. So, if we, we lose employees, we add employees, it's gonna get adjusted, but it's gonna get, it's gonna get adjusted based upon our preset number.
All righty, thank you.
Well, can you give me some idea of, like, how many employees on average are on short-term disability?
If you would have asked me that before 2020, I would tell you zero. But, that is not where we are anymore. In, like I indicate here in this report, there are five employees starting on August of 2020 that, that have been off. There's gonna be a sixth one this year that will be off. Some of these are, you know, you have an individual in the Public Works Department that was off for six months. That's how they got on long-term insurance. You had a, you have a firefighter and, who's been off for six months, so he's collected that entire amount. You have one individual that was off for a couple of months, and he returned back in, in March. The person in the planning department will, will be six months. The person that's going off for, for knee surgery is telling us six to eight weeks. So...
My only question I have, Paul, for the council was, will the qualifying events change for the policy for short-term disability versus what you're doing now?
No.
And this is, what, a two-year?
Yes.
Deal, and then?
Yes.
We could always have the option of...
Yes.
After the status quo.
Yes. And I hope we're in a position to do that, because...
You have a younger group.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we award a contract to One America in accordance with the terms provided in their proposal dated March 15th for insurance coverage.
Second.
Discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Payroll and bills?
Gentlemen, I reviewed the payroll and bills. Payroll this period is $286,000. Cones payable with the additional checks I signed tonight is $498,000. Mostly routine operations and capital projects, with the largest payment going to, I'm sure you can guess, Liveroni, $286,000. I move these be approved and paid as submitted.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Correspondents? They see none? Anybody want to discuss any of the minutes, the other meetings?
I just wanted to make a comment and observation. The Environmental Quality Board is a really busy group, and they do a lot of different projects, and I just wanted to recognize that they have a lot of things going on, looking at environmental concerns and pollinator garden and different other kind of initiatives around trees and biochar. And it's a very busy group when you look at, at what they're doing. I just wanted to acknowledge their activity.
Dislanious.
I, I wanted to bring to council's attention, as you recall, the zoning hearing board had in front of it a, a case that was brought by Organic Remedies, who would like a variance to the size of the dispensary to be located at 110 West McMurray Road. The zoning hearing board took testimony on that and was unable to reach a decision that evening, and it has tabled that for a future hearing, and that hearing will be held on...
May 18th.
May 18th. So...
Did we offer any entries into that hearing?
Yes, we did. I think that we are going to have Mr. Smith with us for the hearing on the 18th, so...
Could I ask a question from Mr. Zook about the, some of the requests for variances? When the planning department receives a request for permit from a resident, is one of the questions you ask whether or not they're in an HOA and whether the HOA permits the request? So...
They don't ask that question, because they're not, not allowed to ask that question, because they can't enforce HOA covenants.
But if an HOA does not approve a request, if it's not standard, if it's permitted, not permitted in the HOA by laws?
Then that, then that's up to the HOA to enforce.
Even if it's placed there with a permit from the township?
So, that would be the same thing, right? If someone comes in with a house plan, like, I'm sure some of the neighborhoods in this township have, that have HOAs, have like an architectural design committee that has to approve a design of a house. Now, we have not, we, if, but if the lot owner brings in a plan and it complies with the codes and all that, we'll give them the permit regardless of whether or not the HOA signs off on it, right?
Okay. And one last question. When you do offer a permit, and there are certain setbacks and things they have to comply with, are those pretty clearly spelled out for the residents? Like, you know, what the distance, side to side, front to back, you know, those setbacks?
Yes.
Anything else?
There's a joint council workshop.
I have a question. Did I read this right, that the, that Benwell Partners, that the, the requested variances were denied?
Correct.
Yeah.
That that'll get appealed?
Oh, I get that.
It probably overturned. There's a joint council workshop with the Planning Commission on May 17th. It's an opportunity to go over and discuss various aspects of the zoning ordinance. I have another that I wanted to talk to you about. We had an opportunity to have a virtual meeting with the district executive for Pendot for the purpose of talking about the upcoming transportation improvement plan. And then, in, in, the transportation improvement plan gets updated every couple of years, and when it comes to state projects, if the project isn't on the tip, there's no chance to move forward with it. So, we, we met with him to discuss the possibility of getting Pendot to advocate for a improvement to the intersection of Bebaut and, and Venetia Road. In our transportation improvement plan, it calls for an improvement to this intersection. That includes turning lanes on Bebaut Road, as well as turning lanes on Venetia Road, and signalization of the intersection. The reason why this came up in part was that the piece of property that Mr. Miller owns next to it, when they came in to want to develop that property, Pendot is going to require something to occur at this intersection. And quite frankly, even given the size of that property, I think it's beyond that which a developer is going to be able to do without assistance from Pendot, because of the, the amount of acquisition of land and, and, and the nature of what you're trying to do with widening that road. So, out of that meeting, Pendot told us a couple of different things. They told us, one, Peters Township has got, gotten more local projects than just about anybody in, in District 12, and, and maybe we need to spread the wealth. Two, if, if there is an intersection project to occur here, it will not be turning lanes. It will be a roundabout. You would have to eliminate that as a possibility. Three, District 12 is not interested in hearing from every one of its municipalities about projects to be put on the, on the tip, but would rather get that from, from the county, so that there's some attempt to coordinate this, so that the District 12's not left picking and choosing which projects to do. That caused us to have a meeting with the, the planning department from Washington County, to ask them whether or not they could assist us in making this intersection one of their projects that they would advocate for with Pendot. And, and what we got from Washington County is, yes, they would, if in fact, what we could do is give them the information they need to be able to, to move forward and, and advocate for this intersection, which means there has to be a schematic plan done that looks realistically at what can and can't be constructed. So, we asked Mr. Montry, our traffic engineer, what something like that would cost, and he is suggesting that it would cost about $5,000 to do. And he is suggesting that it would cost about $5,000 to do. We approached the, the landowner and the, and the development group for Mr. Miller's property and, and suggested that we would expect participation from them. And they're prepared to cover cost, half of the cost of the, of that schematic drawing. The schematic drawing's $5,000, they would contribute $2,500 to that. We would like to move ahead with it because if you know anything about how PennDOT moves, these projects that we're doing that are to be constructed in 2023, the Bebaut Valley Brook intersection project, the Thompsonville East McMurray projects, those were proposed back when Michael was still here. They're probably 10 years old before they've got from the point of somebody advocating for them that they actually got built. And so, you know, this is the first step. And if we don't do something, then you will postpone any consideration of this for another two years. The other thing that PennDOT told us was they have absolutely no money for this kind of effort right now. You know, in the past, we have moved projects along by providing the 20% match the federal government requires. They don't even have the money to put up for the other because it's on a reimbursement basis. They don't have the money to put up to be reimbursed from the federal government. So it's dicey whether any of these things are moving forward, but if we don't make the effort, I can guarantee you won't. So what I'm asking for is permission to do this.
If there were to be a plan or a schematic drawing, it, it's, it's useful life if it wouldn't go away, right?
No.
I mean, it would stay the same.
Yes.
So if for some reason 10 years from now, we can still use it?
Yes.
Could I ask you a question though about a new development versus an existing problem?
Mm-hmm.
We've talked about Just About Road, which is a state road, which is highly developed now, getting more developed and highly traveled. Why would we propose this instead of a repair to Just About? Or is it two different parts?
Two, you're two different-
Okay. So-
Entirely separate.
I'd really like to advocate that they do something with that.
Yeah. And, and PennDOT's solution for Just About Road is not one that is in the township's interest. PennDOT's solution to Just About Road is, we'll do some improvements on it, you take it over and own it. And that is not in the interest of the township, given the lack of drainage and that on that road.
They would have to completely update it. I'm not-
And that's what we have told them. Bring it to township specifications and we'll consider it.
I just, I mean, the residents there, I mean, really, it's dicey. Thank you for clarifying the difference.
So the schematic would be a roundabout?
It, it has to be a roundabout because PennDOT won't allow any other solution.
Perfect.
And how do you do that with properties?
One more three-way roundabout?
Uh, you probably have takings.
You're gonna take at least one house, maybe two.
It depends on which way you push it.
They'd push it forward. I mean, that hillside by that one house is just tremendous. I mean, it really is. They'd have to push it all the way.
And I, that takes a traffic inch or figure of interest. So I guess my question is, can we spend $2,500 to move ahead with this?
I don't have an issue with it.
Okay. Can you-
Okay.
I have to take it for $2,500 and it's not going to use, it's useful.
Oh, yeah.
I think it would be stupid.
All right. Up forward.
Speaking of roads, could I bring up a miscellaneous thing? I'm sorry, were you done?
Sure. Um, is this what you wanted to talk about?
I did. Speaking of roads, Bower Hill Road is on the road paving list for this year. And I wanted to ask about the raised intersection at Just About. The top of the Partridge Hill Lane is the top of Just About Farms, the bottom is down on Just About obviously. They put in a raised intersection. It's, I guess, not completely done. Plus, there's the idea of a sidewalk. Can you bring us up to speed on that, Mr. Ju?
The sidewalk issue?
Both.
Well, Mark could talk about the road.
What do you want to talk about first?
The road would be fine.
Okay. We'll talk about the raised intersection. Yeah, we are, we're surfacing from Bebaut to McCombs, which encompasses the raised intersection, which, you know, it didn't come out like we had hoped. It's not abrupt enough to slow down traffic. So we intend to redo that with the paving. That's why it was never, remember, we had to design to stamp it and everything. We pulled the developer to hold off on doing that. So they'll still do that after we're done reprofiling the, the raised intersection with the paving, so.
Okay. And then as far as the timing of the surfacing, I was just worried because now that they're working on the upper end of that plan, there's a lot more heavy trucks taking dirt in, taking dirt out, bringing in material. When would that be scheduled, do you think?
You know, if I, my best guess is that Bower Hill will probably be resurfaced late July through August. You know, we try to get everything done before school starts again. So there'll probably be a couple more homes finished before then. And really, I mean, most of the development is done, the lower end of it at this point.
Sure it is.
So I, I don't think there's a big impact from trucks at this point. The heavy lifting's done, all the site work's done, it's home construction at this point. So, so we're going to move, move forward and resurface the road regardless of where they're at.
And then the sidewalk concept?
Sidewalks, the approved Just About Farms Phase 2 plan, they have sidewalks that are shown on their side of Bower Hill Road. When Mark and I went out to meet with them, they were ready to put those sidewalks in and we told them to hold up. We, we looked at the other side and said we'd probably get more bang for the buck on the other side. Folks could walk across the street and walk along the open space of the Woodlands Plan and walk to the school if they would want to do that. And the developer is willing to put this stretch of sidewalk in at their expense.
And is that-
We just have not worked out maintenance, who's, who's going to be responsible for maintaining that?
And the length of that, is that twice what they would normally-
Not twice, but a little more than what they would be obligated to do. And if we can't work out this scenario, then we'll go back to the approved plan, which was sidewalks on the other side. We think it's, works better on this side.
Makes more sense.
And we're going to try to work that-
If they're all the way to the school, that makes sense.
Yeah. There'd be a stretch, there's a little stretch to the school where there's not a sidewalk.
And it would never be paved.
Right. But-
This actually, this is, this wouldn't be a sidewalk that has a destination at where, you know? If we put it on the other side of the road, there's no destination. So it just kind of sits out there by itself.
Thank you for explaining that.
I have one thing, Paul, we talked about this a few weeks ago. Truck traffic, also getting more complaints about it, jake breaks, speeding trucks. This morning, it was early, it's 4:15, it was the first jake break. So there's something we can do about that with those residents.
I thought we posted that with a weight restriction.
Yeah, we did.
We did?
Yeah.
Because I got the same complaint from probably the same family and, and I was going to bring it up.
It's, it's posted for no trucks. The only thing, it's local deliveries is the only-
Would the traffic go into the Jennifer Woods County local?
Yes.
It would, yeah.
But the weight restrictions would still apply, correct?
There isn't a weight restriction on the road. I think it's just simply a prohibition against trucks.
Trucks.
Even if there was a weight restriction, if it was a local delivery, I think you would still, you still are required to allow that.
The house that I put in was from, from the video, this is the first house on Thompsonville coming from McCombs earlier. I guess, Paul, I think you mentioned previously a jake break prohibition would require an ordinance?
It requires an ordinance and it's, I've got to go find out what that, you can't say jake break, but yes, it's-
You can't say jake break?
No, no, no. That sign cannot say that. It has to say, I forget what it is. Well, we can look at that retarder or something like that.
Engine retarder.
Yeah.
I, I had a question. I, I don't know if I read this, I think I read it, was that there's a bill pending that would, would give the municipalities more authority to regulate speeds, and I'm not sure about traffic controls, but speeds on state maintain, state roads.
I haven't seen that.
I, I saw it someplace. It might be an execency. I think I saw it on the news within the last couple of weeks.
The city, the city of Pittsburgh was asking the state to pass legislation that would allow them to do that.
Just the city or was it?
It would, I, I don't know. And that I don't know, I just don't, they, they were the one, that was why it was in the news.
Governments, not, it could be the city. But, I mean, I think that would be, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. All right.
One last thing, you all received an invitation from PennDOT and maybe I'll send it back out to you. They're having a, a scoping meeting on the intersection project at, at East McMurray, Thompsonville, Bebaut Road. And it is going to impact the ability of people to get into the BP station and, and the, the housing plant that's across the street from the BP station.
Are they still talking to right in, right out of the McMurray Highlands?
And I'm not sure there's anything that can be done to address that, but you're, you're going to have that whole neighborhood come in here when that plane gets, gets moving.
It is going to be a light, right? It's going to stay like a light?
It's a light and with turning lanes. And the, and the turning lane coming from Bethel Park will extend-
Go all the way through the plant and come on?
They have to go all the way down and come out on Brookwood.
Brookwood?
Yeah. Yeah, I think of that, yeah.
If you want to make a left turn.
Good thing we have double E groups.
Yeah, I guess they won't have that problem in Jennifer Woods, will they?
If I could just say something and I apologize for the delay. I did expect Mr. Lewis's dissertation and I appreciate his comments. I did want to just say that related to the aspect of the private developer, you know, I advocated for that. I met the man just coincidentally at his Cool Springs place and started talking and thought maybe we could do something. And, you know, I thought it was a good potential and the big prohibition that council put forward was that we took the property by eminent domain. And that's why we couldn't do a commercial development. And maybe I should have objected that in the beginning. I, I don't want people to be disabused of the idea that we just rejected it for no reason whatsoever. That was the reason that you put forward. Ironically enough, we ended up paying the guy, paying the buyer again more money and by that time the opportunity was lost. So I think it was an opportunity lost. I should have said that when you were talking earlier. I apologize.
Well, and to follow up on that, I think the other thing that's important for the residents to understand is had we entered into that agreement, we would have had to offer the land back to the developer whom we condemned it from. Because under Pennsylvania law, if you condemn land for a public purpose and then you want to dedicate it to a purpose other than what you've condemned it for, within 10 years of taking it, you have to offer, you have to offer it back to the condemned need, so.
That, but that was waived in the agreement once we paid the ownership money.
Afterwards, right.
So, no, you're absolutely right. There were a lot of moving parts.
I also think that the other issue, and I might be wrong, but my recollection was in addition to that, they wanted a big chunk.
They wanted 20 acres, I think.
It was a prime area.
Oh, yes.
It was, it was like basically, we're giving it to them.
Oh, no, you weren't giving it to them.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, and I mean-
Right up there where those trees are up on top there.
The other issues were just as important, but that was, in my mind, the crusher.
Well, like I said, I was the one who advocated for it. I don't want anyone to think that I didn't stand up for what I said because I wanted to try to have a conversation. I think we could have explored something after the fact and tried to get it done, but things didn't work out that way, so.
Okay. Next agenda?
Well, you, you had asked for an update on what the, the construction condition, so I'm going to, I'm going to hit the button and turn this over to Mark.
Yeah. Do you want to start at the one-minute mark?
That's where I am.
Oh, good. So I just wanted, right here is Rolling Hills Drive. This is the school. So you're looking from the east to the west right now. So this is kind of the outline of the Loop Road. It wraps back around. We have Stormwater Pond Number Two that was under construction down here, parking lot here, another parking lot there off of the Loop Road. Eventually, the trail will wind down here and it'll go through the woods and connect to the Arrowhead, but that's one of the last pieces of the puzzle here, so.
Well, seeing that, not interrupt you, Mark, seeing that, are we going to have guardrails on the outside of that road?
No. No, we're going to have a 10-foot bike lane on the outside of that, or shared use path, I guess we're calling it.
I mean, maybe it just looks that way on the photo. It's a real steep drop off.
Yeah, I wouldn't judge anything by here. So Loop Road goes around, right here is the building pad for the public works satellite facility to maintain the park right here. So up on top, you'll have the great lawn, beginnings of the building pads here for the pavilion, Stormwater Pond Number One. Down by East McMurray, we have Sanitary Shore coming up from Fairway Drive up into the park here. And then kind of the last, so this is where the site of the aquatics center is designed right here, kind of in this bowl in the middle of the site. Here's the old tennis courts. It's kind of a staging area right now. So Loop Road goes around here and the earthwork towards the end of it is not complete. They just started to cut. This was from last Tuesday, so this is May, as of May 4th. But the Loop Road will tee up with the southern driveway here of the school. So it will come in and kind of do an abrupt right-hand turn and then go through the rest of the park. So that's just-
Nice.
-a brief overview of where we're at right now with regards to the parks.
That's a nice, a nice job of how they carved that road in and saved all the big oak trees. That it's a, they really did a nice job of keeping, keeping the better trees there.
Thank you. Thank you for your use for your own.
Yep. We knew there was a reason the fire department had it.
Paul, do you agree to talk about potentially planting trees to break up the, or how you describe that horizon type of fact as you're walking the existing McMurray Road in the way?
Yes, and we're, we're going to do something with that because I think that problem still persists. I know when you come from this direction, you just see that road straight in front of you, so.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We have a short executive session.
Just want to say before, before we adjourn tonight, it's great to be able to reach out and touch your fellow councilmen. And, and I think we, Paul and Ryan deserve a lot of credit for everything they went through over the course of the last year and still getting these meetings ready and still-
And this council deserves a lot of credit for, a lot of municipalities, unlike us, you